All right, good evening. I'm calling to order the regular city council meeting for the city of Hayden, Idaho. It is Tuesday, December 10th, 2024. Maybe get a roll call of council members, please.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember De Priest?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Council President Roder is absent. We do have a quorum.
Okay. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance? Ed, would you want to lead us, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, additions or corrections? I am omitting item 5A ordinance to repeal ordinance 214 from tonight's agenda. And moving on, our first...
Does that go to 6C also?
No.
Wasn't there a...
No, go ahead. You sure?
I thought there were two issues related to that.
No, just one.
Okay.
All right, our first agenda item is a visit from Hayden's fire chief, Pat Riley. Welcome, chief. I went down to the fire station last month and invited our chief to come in and give the public and city council a short summary of services provided. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, citizens, guests, and staff of the city. As Mayor said, he did come down to the fire station. It was my first time of, I believe, meeting you in person, if not maybe possibly once other. I'm Pat Riley. I'm your fire chief for the Northern Lakes Fire Protection District. My goal with this tonight was is to not give data, statistics, and analytics, so I provided a packet of the year's results for what we've responded to in the city of Hayden. As well as in that packet, you'll see differing numbers, and that number submitted to council is summarily the entire fire district. We were formed in the year 2000 as the Northern Lakes Fire District. Former to that, we were a consolidation or a result of consolidation between the former Rathrum Rural Fire District, which ironically was the oldest and the largest fire department at the time, formed in 1888 as the Westwood Fire Department renaming to Rathrum Fire, and the Hayden Lake Fire Protection District, of which I started at in the mid-'90s, and I've proudly served for the fire district in the same station for, goodness, about 28, almost 29 years now, through every rank in the fire department up to now and including the chief of the department. That being said, like I said, I am now the eighth appointed fire chief in the history of both fire districts combined. As I said, both boards consolidated fire districts, and I wanted to give the council a little bit of history as to where we're at and what services we provide the city of Hayden, as well as the other 108 square miles of our combined fire district. We don't just service the city of Hayden. We service the city of Hayden, Hayden Lake, Rathrum. We cover from Hauser Lake to the west, all the way to the east into the national forests around East Hayden Lake, north up to Ohio Match Road, and then our southern border, pretty much all the way across to the south is Prairie Avenue. When our fire district was formed, we had a total of 16 firefighters in the fire department, and you divide that out of two fire stations, one in Hayden and one in Rathrum. We had a total of six on duty if everybody showed up to work who wasn't sick, didn't choose to take vacation, or didn't have another need to leave. So you had, at best, one fire engine in the year 2000, and you had one ambulance. At, I'm sorry, at worst, you had one and one, and at best, you had two ambulances and one fire engine to respond to about 20,000 citizens at the time, combined population of the two cities. This were days that I am starting to remember and want to go back to. We had about 500 calls a year, or what equates to about one and a half a day on average. When we got two calls a day, it was a really busy day. When we got three, I got to go home and tell the kids about it. Today, we have 54 firefighters on staff. We're staffing at right around 19 to 20 on duty per day out of now three fire stations. As I said, we're a full-service fire department servicing everybody within the district as well as the county. We provide fire suppression, advanced rescue, advanced life support, mobile intensive care, transport, vehicle extrication, public education, fire investigations, dive rescue, and just about anything that doesn't fit into the law enforcement category. And then on occasion, we also are responding with our partners, Cootney County Sheriff's Office, as well as the Rathrum Police Department. As of today, and what's included in your packet that I provided to the council is we're a little over 6,000 calls so far this year, and we're on track at running between 700 and 800 calls a month. We should break 7,000 this year. I don't celebrate that because that's 7,000 times somebody needed services, but we're there to provide it. The calls in Hayden that we've responded to from January 1st to present is 3,035, or that averages out to about 10 calls a day. Not every day is 10. Yesterday was 19 calls in Hayden. Nothing that was overly traumatic, at least to the fire department, but 19 times people in the city of Hayden needed our services. Compare that to, it was a total of 37 times in the total fire district that my three fire stations were responding out to: fires, rescues, medicals, car accidents, and then just general welfare checks. Proudest point I can bring up to the city council is, within the city of Hayden proper, we have been able, through staffing our third fire station, which currently is located at the Coeur d'Alene Airport, that third fire engine has reduced our response times by over two and a half minutes over the last year. We are getting our first unit or more on scene within six and a half minutes. I need to get that number down to five minutes, and the only way for me to do that is to put more people on. This isn't a play for asking for anything more. The public was very gracious with us this last November, and we have plans in place to be able to make that happen over time, and so I'll be graded on my report Essentially, like I just mentioned, we put a third staff fire station on, currently residing out of, or housed out of the Coeur d'Alene Airport. I'm very thankful for the Cootney County Board of Commissioners and the airport board for providing us the opportunity to staff the previously unstaffed airport rescue firefighting station. That's looking as though it's going to become a longer term. I'm not going to speak for the respective boards, but the plan and intention is to continue staffing that, turning that into our fourth fire station with what the public has approved us this last November. We should be bringing on an additional eight firefighters to make that a complement of a special rescue truck and additional cover, because while one engine out of Hayden, and we have currently an engine, a paramedic, ambulance, as well as a battalion chief on duty out of our station here in Hayden by Napa, any one of those 10 times yesterday that they were on calls, we rely on other units to come into the city and moving another engine closer to the city of Hayden is the goal, so that we can reduce our response times to your time-sensitive Other fun facts is, I'm very thankful to the city of Hayden, as well as the city of Rathrum and the county commissioners. A few years back, you guys resolved to collect impact fees for us. I'm proud to report the impact fees are coming in. I know growth is not necessarily a popular topic in pretty much anywhere in Cootney County. We don't have the luxury of having to worry about that. We have to serve whomever is in the fire district. Today, we're serving, in 2020, we were serving about 20,000 people. Today, we're serving somewhere in the neighborhood of 55,000 to 60,000 with an average daily traffic flow coming into any one of the streets or highways of right around 15,000 to 20,000 at peak. So on any given day in the middle of the summer, we've got somewhere around 80,000 people that we have to deal with in our fire district. I told the mayor I would keep it short and sweet unless you want me to sit and talk about data analytics and specifics. I provided a packet for you. I would stand for questions, but I promised the mayor I would make it quick.
Anything quick for the chief? Chief, thanks for coming. It was nice to you, and I guess council may, in the future, want to invite you back if there's anything to talk about.
Thank you. I had one job. I was going to suggest, if the council and the mayor would prefer, I could do a quarterly report on our incident numbers. I mean, heck, I could give you actually a monthly report and not have to report on it, but I can come back about every quarter, or as needed or as requested for particular topics, and then I could bring in our subject matter experts like fire marshals and EMS division chiefs that can give you specifics on what may be the topic of that particular month. So I'm sure I'll be talking more with you. That would be what I would recommend.
Okay. Is that something maybe we want to run through, PSC?
No, I think similarly, like we do the law enforcement updates, we could do something similarly for the fire chief to come in and speak on quarterly or monthly, whichever you prefer.
All right. Thanks, chief.
Mayor, council, thank you.
Thank you.
If you'll forgive me, I've got another meeting.
I promised you'd go first.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving on to the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are action items. They consist of approval of November 19, 2024, special city council meeting minutes, approval of November 26, 2024, city council meeting minutes, approval and authorization to publish the fiscal year 2022 fourth quarter treasurer's report, approval of the 2024 annual road and street report, approval of purchase requests for new streets, tack wagon, approval of interstate electrical proposal for public works facility building, approval of Cooper's Landing final plat and acceptance of infrastructure, approval of Mark's Ranch construction improvement agreement to construct sewer with an unimproved right-of-way of rocking our road, ratification of the November 2024 payroll, ratification of bills paid 11/27/2024, and approval of bills for payment. Any questions about the consent calendar items? Do we have a motion?
Sure.
Thanks, Ed.
Yeah, I would move to approve the consent calendar as read.
Okay, there's a motion. We have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Second. Any deliberations? Hearing done. Maybe get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember De Priest?
Yes.
Okay, visitor public comment. Do we have any tonight?
Yes, sir.
Just one?
Just one.
Bill, can I skip my script?
All right.
I said I can skip my script.
Yeah, let's get it.
All right, I trust you, Bill. Name and city of residence, please?
Bill Breezy. I am, I guess, I have a Hayden post office, and I live in an area of interest.
So just outside of Hayden?
Just outside of Hayden.
All right.
I am not here to represent the Historic Preservation Commission.
Okay.
I am here as my own person, I guess, and I just want to bring to the attention of council and the planning department that, right now, Coeur d'Alene is in the process of trying to adopt a plan so that any demolition permits that are on buildings that are over 50 years old, they just don't get pushed through and the building gets demolished. That there are certain requirements for documentation. We're not trying to slow down, they're not trying to slow down building permits. They're not trying to eliminate building permits for the older buildings, but it's an attempt to preserve, at least in paper, with photographs and maybe hand sketches of the plans and stuff, so that we can, so we have a record of all of the buildings that used to be around here. There's a lot of development going on, and they come in, get their demolition permit, and boom, it's gone. And, you know, I think we need to recall some of those things. Every building that gets torn down is a piece of the Hayden culture that will never be brought back. So just a thought, and hopefully you'll consider that. So, yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Okay, moving on to a public hearing. Our city council previously reviewed and proposed recommendations to fees collected for services by the city. Now is the time for any citizen to provide their comments related to the proposed fee schedule. Do we have anybody in the audience that's here for the fees? Okay, we're hearing none.
Do you want me to present?
Um, I guess if no one has any testimony or concerns. Yeah, we probably should just quickly go through for the record so the public knows what city council's already seen.
For purposes of the record, you do have to open the public hearing and then close the public hearing. So it's just a matter of whether or not you're ready to open it. You don't have to open it for me to present, but you definitely do.
Public comment. So for the members in the audience, if any comment is done, staff is going to present. We'll open up the public comment. Then we'll close the public hearing. Council will later in the meeting deliberate and make a decision.
Okay, I will make this fast. I got about 18 slides. It'll go quick, and then if there's any questions, council. This is a public hearing pursuant to Idaho Code 13, 631311A, which is required when any public agency provides newer revised fees in excess of 5%. The public hearing is truly meant for the purpose of hearing public comments regarding any proposed fee increase beyond its limits prescribed. I just want to counsel and understand the legislative statute that's been written for the purpose of this conversation tonight with the body, and then, of course, for the public to make comment from. As council recalls, we held a public workshop, staff did with the council in October, to discuss the overall changes in the fee schedule, including the new changes and new fees. And then staff did notice the public hearing, and I want to make, for the record, I believe I sat at your desk, the copy that was, the notice that went in the paper, and there's also copies of those as you walk in, so the members of the public can see those fees that are published. So pursuant to that workshop and the direction received from council, we published in the paper twice in accordance with 13631311A, and what was published, council can take a fee up to that, but you can't be in excess of that. You can be less than that. This just kind of summarizes what I just said. It was published in the paper, the 26th and the 3rd respectively. It also provided the justification for the fees. As mentioned, you can, the fees are published at the greatest or highest amount that can be imposed. They can't be higher, but can be lower. And just as a summary for the public's benefit of how does a city actually move forward with addressing fee increases or changes, and that is simply by adopting a resolution, which you'll do later in the public meeting. So just go through quickly all of the tables. I think overall, when we think about the fee schedule, there is a visual change that's happened, more so than the content, and that was in order to provide some more ease of use from the public side of things. So if you're Joe Citizen and you wanted to get to planning and zoning fees or planning and development fees, you can now easily find that based on the table and color coordination. And then, of course, the purpose from the staff's side of view of doing this is that allows us, when we make changes to fees, that we can now be specific to a table rather than amending the entirety of that resolution or that, excuse me, all those fees. So you'll find that will happen sometime in January when the impact fee recommendation comes forward. The result of that will likely look at fees in excess of 5%, and it'll be back before you, and we'll be amending only that table. So I'm just going to go quickly through all the tables now and do my best. This isn't a summarization of all the changes that are being made. Again, the ones that are published are provided at the table when you walk in, and also on our website, there is the full worksheet of all the changes that were being made that also includes those changes that were either notational or not in excess of 5%, which there are a handful of. So we think about the first table, administrative fees, just a notation here that there really were only minor changes and mostly eliminating unnecessary fees. So you'll see those, for example, those stricken at the bottom of the page there. Table 2 is now the recreation fees, and in these particular fees, we saw some new fees being added, and those are relative to new programs that we're offering, and then some increased fees due to increased costs of us to conduct those particular programs. And likely, those are a lot of the times due to the fact that maybe the cost of administering water over those fields, or in this case, we saw an increase from the school district from the use fees that we share with them. So those changes had to be reflective to pass those costs along to the users. Number 3 is the new table for event fees. So this is really about folks that are using public facilities and offsetting any costs associated with their use and their specific use onto those users. So here we saw, for example, when folks or organizations rent out our fields, or for example, for tournaments, or reserving parks for camps, you're seeing some modifications relative to those fee increases. And then new fees are really, this was an area where the city was trying to do a better job of acknowledging that our citizens who pay through their property tax receive a benefit of a lower rate than those of out-of-state, or excuse me, out-of-city residents that are coming in and renting our facilities. Table 4 is the new planning and zoning, or excuse me, planning and engineering fees. And you'll see, and here, kind of a high-level summary is, we're really, this example of appeals and requests, I know will be an area of discussion later when you deliberate, but really, the task of this particular table, as you recall when we went through the workshop, was really trying to get a better understanding of those actual costs and shepherding those onto the applicants so that they're paying the true cost of that service and that the property taxpayer is not subsidizing. So you'll see, if you recall, Donna went through a robust discussion about how we looked at analyzing those charges of those costs and then reflecting those as fees within our official fee schedule. We did add a new fee in this table, and that was really addressing some procedural opportunities for us to break apart applications as they navigate through the entitlement process. Building, or, excuse me, table 5 is the building fees, and this really was more or less a cleansing of that table to reduce some redundancies and to provide, for the most part, some clarifications on our notes within those fees. Table 6 is now the equipment rates. You'll recall, in the workshop, we did not suggest any changes at this time. This table really is meant to have an opportunity. If we have an issue where we're working with other agencies or state organizations on events or issues within the city and they're using our equipment, this is an opportunity for us to pass along those costs. So at some point, we'll need to come back to this and look at their actual, sorry, actual cost on the city and maybe reflect those at a future point, but it wasn't something, it isn't something that's, you know, we deal with every day, so there was no point at this moment with all the changes being happening to not look at addressing it at some future date. Impact fees, no changes. This is one, as I mentioned in my opening remarks, that will likely come back before you based on the recommendations by the body that met over these, this last month. Table 8 is the new public works fee structure, and you'll see in here, we had some new fees provided in order to really provide opportunity of the applicant to not have to pay for a fee that was encompassing maybe three or four different outcomes and really breaking those apart and allowing them to maybe pay a more respective fee for a more narrowed view of something that they're doing. For example, when we look at our public infrastructure fees, looking at breaking apart sidewalks, curbs, and approaches if an application doesn't include all of those. And on table 9, we have our sewer utility fees. This is where we set our rates for our enterprise fund, and you'll see that, for the most part, the changes that are here are really to remove an existing surcharge that has been fully funded. And then, based on our rate analysis that was done by FCS, you'll see that increase of, I think it was 50 cents a month. So, is that right? 50 cents or a dollar? Fifty cents a month, a dollar. Okay, yeah. So right now, the mayor, I'll hand it back over to you. You can certainly open the public hearing and engage in any comments that the public has. You'll then need to close the public hearing, and then the decision will come at the time of the discussion of the resolution. I wanted to make this point because I know this is an area of discussion, and it came up during the workshop over the appeal fee under the planning and engineering, and it was of significant importance to members of the council to discuss this more in depth, but you did direct the staff to move forward with publishing the rate as suggested by staff, knowing that that would be the cap, and you could certainly look, just setting the fee to something less than that. That, as you can see down there at the bottom, the appeal for reconsideration with respect to a public hearing, it was $440. Staff suggesting an actual true cost of service is $856, and that is due to the staff time that's needed and the noticing requirements that are necessary in order to hold that public hearing as an appeal. And there were some discussions amongst the council about whether that would be an area that you would want to likely subsidize with other revenue sources than having the true cost of that service being paid by the applicant, and I'll leave that there because I know you'll pick up. One question was made of staff. How many appeals with city council or with public hearings that tie to them have happened in the last five years, and we did a quick review, and there have been six since 2019 to current? None in the last year. The last, most current one was in 2023. So, and if you want more information, we can certainly provide that, but hopefully that answers the question for now. So we talk about where are the areas of decision. The adoption of any amended fee shall be by resolution. You have a draft resolution. Staff provided you that. It's essentially the documentation that sets forth the whereas's and the authority for you to adopt the exhibit, which is, as I showed you, the Excel spreadsheet that has all of those tables, and that will be Exhibit A. If you make any changes as it relates to what was presented to you in the form of that Exhibit A, you can still make a decision tonight and direct staff to make that change, and we would make that change and present it to the mayor for, I don't know if we sign resolutions or not, but I think we do, for our records. You also may continue your deliberations to a future date and direct staff to make changes, to bring back the resolution in a future exhibit. Just note that we won't be having a public hearing. It'll just be a matter for decision. And that's it. Stand for any questions.
Any questions for Lisa?
I guess I have one. You know, with the equipment rental, apparently other agencies or the people, do our people operate it, or do we trust the people who are renting it out to operate it?
You know, in the 10 years that I've been administrating in cities and in the 20 years I've been working with cities, I haven't seen that actually come to fruition, but I see a lot of cities do that. A lot of times, the most, and you see it more prevalently now than you did even 10 years ago, the most useful time that that happens is when you have imminent fire danger from a forest fire or such, so you would likely work with IDL.
Burdenous situations.
But I can't think of any other situation. You might have, when I was in Bonners, we had a major hill slough, and we maybe worked with the local agencies with our equipment to help move some of that debris, and they reimbursed us based on our rates that we had established. So that's why you have them.
Good, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Tom.
Lisa, so we just passed a budget. For public benefit in one paragraph or less, can you sort of summarize how fees get plugged into the city's revenue to cover expenses?
Yep. Yeah, so every year, when we go through budget discussions and ultimately pass a budget, staff develops a revenue based on anticipated need within our tax-supported services and our fee-supported services, and we present to you what we think those budgets will be, and we offset those with what we think that we're going to receive in fees. And we set those fees based on the actual cost of service as best we can define. And so when we present a budget to you with fee increases, we need to commensurately provide you that document to increase those fees in order for your revenues to match your expenses.
Any other questions? All right, so for the public presence, I will ask one last time. Is anyone here to comment on our fees schedule, proposed fee schedule tonight? Okay, I'm hearing no yeses here, so we are not going to have a public comment, and we'll close the public hearing, and I'll turn it over to council to deliberate the fees as briefed. briefed.
I think we'll do that at the resolution timeframe, which is on six.
New business.
Okay.
Eight.
I thought we'd at least talk about it and decide what we want to adjust before we get to the resolution. Is that not the way?
This is a public hearing. It's not the deliberation portion. So you do that under the resolution.
Thank you. All right. I guess that closes item four. So moving on to item 5B. It's an action item, PZE 20-0193.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just for a point of clarification on not including repealing ordinance 214.
Yes.
So we're, you were in the middle of reading it three times?
Yes.
Is that affected by delaying the?
No, I believe the only requirement is to read it three times.
Okay, it doesn't have to be three times in a row?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
So with item 5B, this item is for council to complete deliberations and motion whether or not to approve PZE 20-0193, which is the battleground phased subdivision primary plat. Wanda, do you have any?
Something I would add for council tonight is you are provided with a letter from the applicant's legal counsel indicating concern with some public comment that occurred on social media from your last meeting until now. And so for this application, as well as the North Winds application, I'll be asking each of you to affirm on the record that if you did review any of the social media comments related to these two subdivisions, that you will not and that you cannot be relying on any of that information in your decision making tonight. Can each of you affirm that with a verbal yes?
Yes.
Yes.
And I didn't look at anything.
Thank you.
Okay, so I know we've already been briefed on this item and really were to the point of deliberation. So I'd ask council to focus simply on those items that will lead us to motion. Anybody want to go first?
I don't have anything to say, Mr. Mayor.
You have nothing?
Nope.
Does anybody want to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just wanted to ask if we could get clarification on who decides how the impact fee dollars are going to be used.
How they're going to be used or calculated and paid?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Well, those are two separate questions.
Because that's going to be, because they, the discussion was on proportional share, making sure that everyone pays their proportional share, and it's going to be.
The deliberation before you is whether or not the application meets the standards of approval for a subdivision as outlined in Hayden City Code. The calculation of the impact fee is done by staff at a later time.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Sure. I'll make a comment and then then a motion.
Okay.
I know that I had asked for the continuance of this because of some of the issues that I felt were getting us potentially into of concern, I guess I'll say. And those questions have been answered. And so I believe that at this point in time, I'd like to motion to approve, I'm trying to remember the right one here, PZE 20-0193 battleground phase subdivision preliminary plat.
Is there a second of that motion?
Second that.
There's a second. Is there any discussion on the motion being made?
With staff recommended conditions, planning and zoning commissions recommended conditions of approval?
Sure. Is that, is that what I'm seeing here, maybe? You're in the right one? To include, I will amend my motion to include any recommendation, staff recommendations.
Planning and zoning commission.
Oh, planning and zoning recommendations.
Do we need to second that?
Does your second agree with the amendment?
I agree with the amendment.
Okay. Is there any other discussion that needs to be made? Maybe we get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember DePree?
Yes.
Moving on to new business. Now we go to the resolution. So following tonight's public hearing, our first new business agenda item is to adopt a resolution adopting the fee schedule for services provided by the city. So in essence, we're going back to our procedures where we will now deliberate, and then council will make a decision to adopt a resolution.
Mr. Mayor, I have a comment or a question?
Mm-hmm.
So Lisa, thank you for bookending that potential discussion on the impact or on the appeal fees. So you did mention a number that have occurred over the past five years. Do you know who the applicants were? Were they mom and pops? Were they individual homeowners? Were they major developers?
I don't have the answer to that question tonight. I certainly can get back to you. I wasn't, I loaded that question ahead of time, so I didn't come prepared to answer.
So I'm going to express how I view this for the consumption of, and the diets, and you know, they can make up their own minds. But I kind of feel like when somebody comes back with an appeal, they've already gone through the process once, and they feel either they haven't been heard, or they've not, or maybe even they feel they've been wronged by the decision. And so for, to ask them to pay another fee in order to get reconsideration on a decision, I feel like that's putting up a barrier. And that, in my opinion, if it were somebody trying to, say, remodel a home or do something with their private property, that it would be an unfair ask from the city. So with the consideration of the rest of the council, I would like it if we could figure out either to leave the fee as is, or maybe find a happy medium between the current and the proposed.
Done.
Done.
Yeah, I think I'm right along the same line. And specifically with regard to the appeal and request for reconsideration of a public hearing, and even, the public meeting only went up $25, $20. But the jump from 440 to 856, plus passing through the cost of noticing, they pay that anyway, the noticing and all those costs. The 856 is basically for staff, cost of staff. Am I correct in that? Because they, the pass, the pass through of all the other costs. I think, I think either 440, or I'd say finding a happy medium, because I believe those numbers that Lisa gave, it doesn't happen that often. And it kind of gives the appearance of attempting to maybe discourage it with such a high price. I understand the cost and the fact that it does cost staff the amount of time, and that is taxpayer money paying staff to do that work. But a jump up from 440 to 856, and when we have it so few times, I just think does appear, although I'm certain that it's not, but I think a lot of people will look at it as an attempt to discourage appeals. So I agree with Councilmember Schaefer that maybe a happy medium, maybe we can find some adjustment to a happy, find a happy medium.
I think it's valid to acknowledge the conversation that that I had with Councilmember DePree ahead of the meeting and a question that was posed about why it was so large. And if I am correct in saying, I believe that there was decision points previously that led this amount to be less than the true cost of service. So what we're presenting to you is that true cost. So it would be valuable for you to consider somewhere accounting for some of those actual costs, because otherwise we just continue to grow in that disparity between actual costs and what they're paying.
If I remember our discussion, and you're correct, this has been, I guess, previously when this has come up, council has decided not to increase it. So it may have increased from 440. The recommendation last time may have been to 550. I don't know what the number was, but we've now passed this off multiple times now. And as you say, if we pass it off again, the next time it's going to come up, the true cost may be $1,000. And so we, you know, how far along do we kick the can down the road or whatever? I know, I recognize the fact that, you know, or I feel that, you know, we somewhat have a double edged sword here. I do not want to put anything out that's going to have people going, what? You just don't want us to do this. So you're making it prohibitively expensive. But we do need to cover the actual costs as best we can. So I think, hopefully, maybe we could find somewhere in between right now.
I do feel like to rephrase, I think what you're saying is, is by not requiring the applicant to pay for the true cost of service means that that cost is being borne by another funding source.
Right.
And that funding source, most likely in this case, is is going to be our property tax dollars and our other shared dollars from the state.
Sandy, any comments?
Yes, I would concur with my fellow council members that this is a, a big jump. I feel like this is the one instance where individuals, individuals can ask the council to reconsider a decision that was made. I agree on maybe a middle number, a middle in the, a number in the middle would be maybe $660 or something like that. Everyone would concur with that.
Okay. And just to clarify for the public, or to summarize, the, this fee every year gets spoken about. And every year, to my knowledge, council has kept it, suppressed it on purpose and asked council to, or asked the city staff to, if you will, find the money elsewhere. Now, dollars and cents on the budget, don't throw anything at me, Natasha, but I mean, we, it's, we're talking hundreds of dollars. We can, it's not that much to absorb it. So the concept is true. We do want to acknowledge that our staff does put time and and that time costs money. But the actual impact on our budget for the public's consumption is miniscule. It's literally decimal dust. So council, if somebody wants to throw a number out, and then if you guys can agree on it, if it stays at 440, or it goes up to 500, or something palatable.
I would, I would suggest 600.
I'm happy with 600 as well. I'd be happy with Councilman White, 650. I just think making a compromise is
That's fine, Joe.
is a worthy gesture.
600 would be fine.
600 is fine. Sounds like 600 is the winner. Okay. Are there any other line items that you wish to discuss? I think there were two Lisa had on there that were spoken about in the workshop.
So just, I just thought of that one as the one, I was asked to bring forward the fees as presented in the public workshop, and we have done that. So unless there's, I just copied that, so it was bigger, big enough to read.
I can't see it. So it looked like it was two items.
It there were two items, but it's because the other one was the public meeting one, which went up $20 to show comparison.
Okay, okay. So are there any other considerations? Do we want to adopt the resolution for the fee schedule as presented, with the exception of modifying the appeal request for reconsideration, city council public hearing from $440 to $600?
Yes.
So moved. Yeah, I'll second.
That works.
All right. So a motion, a second. Are there any deliberations on the motion? Hearing none. Maybe get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember DePree?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna move on to item 6B. The North Winds subdivision preliminary plat decision is a closed record case, which means that no additional testimony nor exhibits are to be considered. This agenda item was previously recommended for approval by our planning and zoning commission. As our council is assuming a similar role as a judge in this quasi judicial manner, they are compelled to protect due process rights.
Can we pause there for one second?
Absolutely. I'm sure I boogered up something.
Your previous action item?
My apologies. I missed one part of that, which is when you want those fees effective. That was part of the decision.
That's true.
portion of the resolution. So I apologize, I missed that. I don't have it in front of me. I was making the change in the master fee schedule. So I just need to know, maybe a motion at when you want to make those effective, effective immediately, which means it would go into
Please, January 1st.
Please don't. It takes us a while to build these in. Don't do that.
January 1st.
Donna, February, March?
What's customary.
January 1? January 1 or February 1?
No, let's go January.
So related to item 6A.
Do we need a motion?
Yes, we need a motion for item 6A to clarify when to adopt the fee schedule for the city of Hayden.
I would motion to make those fees effective January 1, 2025.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember DePree?
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
Okay. Was there anything, any issue with the introduction of 6B?
No, you can.
All right. So council has the plat, and just for the public's consumption, a preliminary plat is simply a landowner has a piece of land. They're asking the city to carve it up or to cut it up, consistent with our laws. And so city council is going to determine if that request meets our city code and if there are any additional conditions put on by our planning and zoning commission.
And similar to the battleground subdivision continued deliberations, I would, for the record, remind council that we've had a discussion about meeting with legal counsel, the fact that from the planning and zoning recommendation until tonight, there has been a significant amount of commentary on social media, which cannot be considered by any of you this evening. It's a closed record, as the mayor indicated. So I need each of you to affirm that if you have reviewed any of those comments, that you will not be relying on any information that you saw in your deliberations or decision making tonight. And can you please each verbally do so?
Yes.
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 And once again, didn't read it.
May I make a request before we start?
Yes.
Can we put up the slide of the P and Z presentation where they showed the map of the subdivision, please?
Relax, because I loaded it.
You knew.
That's why you're Donna.
To say I have it ready, but it's not around here. Of course. I bet it opened upstairs. So which one of these slides?
The one that shows basically from between Hutter and, or rather, you know, obviously Hutter between that, that one there.
Okay.
Wait, is that just North Winds?
It is.
No, he showed another one that shows North Winds and Battleground and
Oh, I don't, I don't know if I have, I don't know that I have his loaded.
There we go. That's it.
Is it that one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So council, please begin deliberations. Sandy, you want to go first?
Yes, I was just going to ask for clarification on amendment 6.3 of the annexation agreement. Donna, could you elaborate on that for me? We talked about this.
We did. So in the conditions of approval, it identifies that there's a quirk in the annexation agreement. The annexation agreement, I believe in 6.3, identifies that the right of way of Robeson Road.
Can you point to that?
That's Hayden. So this is Robeson. That's, yeah, this is Robeson. It comes across At the time of the annexation agreement, it was believed that Robeson Road would connect to Hutter. Hutter has been identified as a critical corridor and has reduced amounts of intersections onto it. And so our transportation plan reflects that and doesn't allow connectivity onto Hutter. So then in 6.4, or something, it's in the, I don't have the annexation agreement in front of me. But in another section of the annexation agreement, it identifies that the construction of Robeson Road shall occur at the time of development in accordance with a plan that exists today. So there's a little bit of a disconnect there between what the right of way dedication piece was in the annexation agreement and what they're actually required to build in the annexation agreement. So should this be approved in accordance with our existing plans, we just need to figure out how to clarify the annexation agreement that they really weren't required to give that right of way, but only construct in accordance with the adopted plans. It's more just for historical, trying to make sure that we've It's more just for historical, trying to make sure that we've kept everything consistent. Is that fair?
Yeah, I just was thinking for the record, you could state when the annexation agreement was signed by the city and the landowners.
Approximately...
I'm trying to pull it up right now.
2013. Does that sound about right? I'm getting shakes. So, yeah, 2013.
Okay. Any other questions for Donna, or?
Do we get to ask about the traffic impact analysis?
The traffic impact analysis was submitted, and it was originally, and the link in your executive summary is to the transportation impact analysis that was submitted. It gets sent off to our transportation, our city's transportation consultant, who reviews it on our behalf, and makes sure that the assumptions are correct, and that their results are correct, and sends back comments. Those comments came back and were presented back to the applicant just about the end of October, the first part of November of 2024. And there, folks are in conversation, trying to get those questions answered, and a new draft submitted back to our consultant for review. So, it's in review process.
Still in review. So, could conclusions and recommendations change from the, what were they expected?
Perhaps, but, perhaps.
I just wanted to focus in on what the mitigation measures were, because the conclusion says that the development will have a significant impact on traffic in that area, and they discuss the intersections of Hutter and Hayden, and Carrington and Hayden, I think there was a third one, right? Somebody help me.
I don't know off the top of my head.
I would assume it would also be Prairie, I mean it's...
Yeah, that's it, yeah.
Prairie and Hutter.
So, one of the conditions of approval that was identified in, by the staff, as well as Planning and Zoning Commission, identifies the fact that when mitigation requirements are identified in the transportation impact analysis, that the staff and the developer will work toward an agreement to bring back before the city council on how to mitigate those offsite requirements, before any construction plan submittal will be accepted. So, there is a timing component.
For the public's consumption, the city council will see this again for final plat.
Well, they'll see it again for the, for the impact fee, or the, or some other funding way to fund those mitigations.
Right.
So, the condition of approval specifically says the developer shall enter into a separate cost share and reimbursement agreement identifying transportation infrastructure, which is required to be constructed, and which reimbursement may be sought. So, that will come back before you.
Yep, and that's what I was getting at, so the public understands this isn't just a one and done, and then there's houses popping up everywhere. There's plenty of steps between today and any construction.
Right along with this traffic issue here, is this, will this be, the participation be related to, there's several developments in the area, and they, and they have all basically said that they're working with the developers in the area related to the intersection and road improvements. Is, has this been, is this part of that consortium or whatever?
The consortium that you're talking about has to do with the sewer infrastructure. We don't have a, we haven't seen any agreements that have come forward related to transportation, because their transportation impact analysis are under review.
Well, I...
For this one...
Before we get too deep in that, are we treading out of what's in the case?
I just think that a good understanding of the process of where we stand right now, what it means to the applicant, and the city, it essentially establishes what we call entitlement to move forward with investing more dollars, knowing that at the end, you know, they're complying with the city's requirements. So, you know, there are some cities that require everything upfront, and so, there's a lot more risk on the developers' end, there's some that push it all to the end, we're somewhere in the middle. And the reality being that along this process of moving towards final plat will result in the developer and the city council sitting down and developing agreements, development agreements, et cetera, transportation agreements, maybe some specificities within either of those documents, about what their contribution rate will be outside of, as part of their development impacts, but maybe even outside of that, what we call nexus of impact on their development. Those things are, this process will give them the, you know, the go-ahead to start investing in those, that process. So, to the degree at which you want to book in that, discussion will be a matter of honing in on those conditions today as an accuracy and precision point, or whether or not you're comfortable enough with the way they're tight, that we'll come back before you with that. So, you know...
And it's not, it's the same condition of approval that is required for each development in the area that comes forward. So, it would be advantageous for the developers to communicate with each other, and not work with the city individually, each of them, when there could be a master plan to solve the problem with some cost sharing. But we don't have any authority or ability to force them to work together, we only have the ability to work with each of them individually on each of these developments.
Okay. I'll throw this out there, and you can shoot me down maybe, hopefully, no. The intersections and the cost of, we're talking primarily Hutter and Hayden, I know there's been discussions related to that, signalization, things like that, will that be, I'm assuming it will be a part of the impact analysis and the possible mitigations related to the intersection situations?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sandy, want to, any other deliberations?
Yes, I just wanna ask one more question. So, this is single-family residential, or four per acre, and they have 80 acres, so about how many homes per acre?
Forty acres with this preliminary plat application. And they are, so 40 acres at four dwelling units per acre is 160 residential structures that they're allowed, and they're requesting 88.
Okay. And the square footage on those properties?
They have minimum lot sizes of 8,250 square feet, and in many cases, they're larger than that.
Okay. So, there's no duplexes?
So, the average lot size is 10,563 feet.
Okay.
Does that include phase, phase four, one, I mean, what, are those, are there 88 on phases, what is it, one, two, and three probably? And what's the situation if, let's say Hutter bypass, whatever, if that becomes buildable, is that totally a separate, or is this all?
Right now, it's one lot and its own single-family residential.
And they're just not developing at this time?
It's part of the Hutter bypass setback area they're required to leave as a setback, part of their annexation agreement.
And it's approximately how many acres?
I don't know off the top of my head.
8.66.
There you have it.
How many?
It's on the slide. Eight, eight.
Oh, yeah, right there.
So, that long, narrow, phase lot, phase four lot one is eight, how many?
Eight point six six acres.
That's all? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That was it for me, thank you.
So, where they're digging the moat, so more people can't?
It's where the snow goes.
Okay, so, as council, are there any more deliberations? Is it too early to call for a motion?
I'll go ahead if, no, but if there are no more. Okay, I'm gonna write one.
It's on page one.
Yeah, I got it.
Gotcha.
I move to approve PZE 24-0014 North Winds Phase subdivision request with Planning and Zoning Commission's recommended conditions of approval, finding that the request is in accord with the standards of Hayden City Code based upon testimony received at the Planning and Zoning Commission public hearing and the record of request.
Okay, was a second on that motion?
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, is there any discussion on the motion being made?
Fonda, really quick, before we finish, how do we clean up this, is it an amendment to the annexation agreement, or is it just, what, to fix the difference between the dedication of right-of-way versus the construction of Robeson? Pardon me?
An amendment to the annexation.
Okay, will that have to come back as a separate?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I need to know.
Yes.
Keep going.
Maybe get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember DePreez?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item 6C. Our next agenda item asks council to approve the proposed council and commission's meeting 2025 schedule. Does council have any questions or concerns related to what is being proposed?
I have one.
Okay.
I was just looking at the month of November, could we possibly move the city council meeting from the 25th to the 18th, to leave that week of Thanksgiving free? I need a day to bake pies.
Oh, gotcha. So, we are, we are tentatively scheduled for November 25th?
Yes.
And that's because the 11th is a holiday?
It's elections.
Veterans' Day elections. Does council want to move the 25th meeting to the 18th? There is only one meeting that month.
November 25.
And we're gonna be in the same situation December then, basically, because the 23rd is two days before Christmas. And did someone say the 11th is a holiday?
Yeah. We're voting and it's...
Voting is on the...
Oh, voting's the fourth, so it's Veterans' Day, isn't it? That's a ball just.
So, we would have the meeting on the 11th?
Uh, no, no meeting on the 11th.
City Hall is closed.
Okay, so, there's, that would mean we...
That's why we were thinking the 18th might be good, because it's the one and only meeting in November.
Yeah. And then one in December.
I'm good with both adjustments for November and December.
What are you wanting to adjust in December?
The suggestion was by Councilman DePreez to take the meeting out of the week of Christmas and put it the week before.
That'd be two weeks in a row.
Yeah, okay.
I think we're probably stuck with one in December.
Oh, we should do it New Year's Eve.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think the 23rd's preferable to the 30th. Or is council fine keeping December as presented? Scrooge says we only get the 25th off.
I'm fine with it, I mean, it's... Arguably, you know, we have bills to pay, and it's the end of the year, and there's a lot of companies that we work with who want that payment to come in before the end of the fiscal, or end of the calendar year, so it is better to have a second meeting in December.
Isn't it tradition anyway that we only have one council meeting in December? I'm just, I mean, that's what we're doing tonight, right?
I have to defer to...
I mean, I'm okay, but maybe we...
But here's the deal, I took two items off the agenda tonight, so you guys wouldn't have to, it was already a long enough meeting.
Yeah.
And I don't like doing that, because we, part of our business is to do it in a timely manner for the public.
It will be over a month again before you guys meet, and the challenges that we have are, one, meeting our vendors' requirements to get paid before the end of the year, and two, we have over a month now that we can't get decisions for something, so I, I'm just, I know my staff's probably gonna...
I understand.
It's preferred that we have a second meeting, even if all we do is through pills.
Yeah, maybe that's all it is.
Okay. So, would anybody like to make a motion to adopt the 2025 meeting calendar with the adjustment of November?
Removing the 25th?
And replacing it to the 18th?
I move that we accept the calendar with one change in November, moving the 25th to the 18th.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the motion? Maybe get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember DePreez?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Okay, item 6D. Christopher Morris has been nominated to serve our Planning and Zoning Commission, and carries my complete confidence to serve our city in its capacity. Council has given a copy of his application, I want to say it was three, four, it's been a while, four, four weeks ago. Any questions, or do we have a motion to appoint Christopher?
I make a motion that we approve the appointment of, sorry, Christopher...
Morris?
Yeah, Morris, for Planning and Zoning.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion is second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Maybe get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember DePreez?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Donna, will you please reach out and let Christopher know he's in his ear, or Sean? Welcome. Good to see you. All right, we're moving on, item 6E. Our H6 lift station contract, original low bidder did not provide all required information. As such, we're asking council to award the lift station contract to Simco Development Group as the lowest responsive bidder. Any questions of staff, or anybody like to make a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to talk about this. So, this is no surprise to Lisa, I've already emailed her on it. I'm gonna recount, because I think you and I both under, at least what I understand to be true is in fact true, yes, about how this came about.
You'll have to be more specific.
Okay, well, I thought you would remember the email.
I pulled up the email, a lot's happened in the Jasons.
Okay, sorry, I understand. So, the original bidder, SNL...
Underground.
Underground. Sorry, I have to put my reading glasses on for this one. Well, actually, let me back up. So, the engineer's opinion of probable cost from, this comes from JUB, was $2.4 million. And then the SNL came in with a bid of 2.925 and change, million dollars, but in their application, they left the fields for the HVAC and the plumbing subcontractors blank. And then, upon additional review, and I read through the thread, and I tried to get inside your head, Alan, that, oh, these guys, we knew that they were, had, they were also HVAC and plumbing subcontractors, so the assumption was that they were subcontracting to themselves to get the job done. Correct so far?
Well, I will tell you, there was a thought that maybe they were, and under that scenario, we weren't, I was not sure, neither was the engineer, that they had to actually list it.
Okay.
And we got the response from legal counsel, regardless of whether they were or they weren't, they had to put a number in there, and list themselves or list us up.
Okay.
They didn't, they did neither.
So, the mistake was they, an oversight, and they didn't list themselves.
An oversight that's required by Idaho code.
I, I get that, I get that. Okay, I understand.
And, do you mind, Tom?
No.
So, for the public's consumption, we do have to follow rules when we award contracts. If a contractor fails to meet Idaho code when they apply for a bid, if we make exceptions or call them and say, you've done this oversight, the next lowest contractor could put in a claim and sue the city for damages, because by law, they should have been awarded the contract, as we're trying to do right now. So, I know it's very important for us to protect our tax dollars, but that goes both ways. We could say we always want the lowest bidder, of course we do, but we need the lowest responsive bidder, so that we don't open ourselves up to litigation that we can't defend. Those actually tend to be more expensive than the difference between the two contractors.
Okay. Thank you, that's a good point.
I don't know if you want me to respond, I certainly can, for, but I know council, through, through me sending you the email individually, all saw my response, I'm hoping you read it, I certainly can for the record, but...
No, I read it, I read it.
I think that just know that staff did their best to try to bring the lowest cost bid to fruition, but given the obstacles that were presented in front of us, caused, based on the advice of our attorney, caused me to question the liability position I put ourselves in, from the standpoint of, of having to carry not only the cost difference, but also attorney fees and damages that they could bring forward in a realistic lawsuit, so...
Did that answer that, Tom?
Oh, totally, yes, thank you.
Ed, did you have something?
Yeah, along this line, too, and I, I agree, you know, we do want the lowest bidder, if at all possible, especially if they can do quality work, as does anybody else. But to go along and for the record here, I guess I could say, Idaho code 67-2310, failure to name subcontractors or list the valid contractor's license number for plumbing, HVAC, or electrical work being self-performed by the general contractor as required by subsection one of this section. Here's the word, "shall." We don't have any choice on it, okay? Shall render any bid submitted by a general contractor unresponsive void, okay? And as the mayor said, and I believe there were some citations of court cases, president, whatever.
There's annotations that are analyzing that.
There was a, there was a specific court case where the city did not deem, in a very similar situation, an unresponsive bid, and the second responsive bid, or the one responsive bid that was next in line sued, and the city lost not only the profit from each, from that contract, but also had to pay attorneys and damages to that. And, you know, when you start seeing a comparable that's almost in tandem with where you're going, you're gonna see the staff make decisions that keep us, you know, in a very...
Out of court.
Yeah, legal framework.
Preserve tax dollars.
Yeah, that... These are, just to be clear, these are ratepayer dollars, so...
Sorry, ratepayer dollars, you're always kidding me. It's all tax money to me.
It's not, though.
I know. All right, so, somebody want to make a...
Motion.
Thank you.
Sure.
I will move to award the city's H6 lift station project to Simco Development Group, LLC.
Hey, we have a motion, we have a second?
I guess I will second that, Mr. Mayor.
Discussion on the motion being made? Maybe get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember De Priest?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. We go on to 6F, our Development Fee Impact Committee is here to present their recommendations for council to approve an updated fee schedule related to development. Donna and Sean Taylor from our committee are presenting, welcome.
Well, Sean's presenting, I have to go. PowerPoint.
Hey, Donna? Do I need to state my name and my address?
No.
Is this one you want?
Yes.
Well, that's a good idea.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome, do you want that one, or this one?
Uh, this one, yeah, yeah. Council and mayor, thank you for having me here tonight. I'll give you a quick little background on the Development Impact Fee Advisory Committee. I think it's about 2020, we started looking at our impact fees and realizing that perhaps they were a little bit low. The state's very specific in the regulations, how we can render impact fees and what those rates can be, so we initiated a study, which is required by the state, to look at our impact fees. That took us about two years to get that study done. Once we had the study in place, we had a recommendation to council, what we found was that our commercial impact fees were, in some cases, two to three times below what the maximum allowable would be, according to the study that we received, and that our residential impact fees were about 25% low. Based on that, and understanding that commercial isn't quite as large of a contributor to our impact fees, we recommended in, for 2023, that we phased the commercial increases in over a period of three years, 2023, 2024, and 2025, and we took, and we recommended the full residential increase starting in 2023. That was approved by council for 2023. 2024, in September, I believe, year two came before the council here, and I think you remanded it back to us, I believe the reason was you wanted us to go right to the year three schedule. At that same time, the state implemented some changes to how the impact fee committee makeup could be, so we were not able to get a quorum or an impact fee committee meeting prior to the end of 2023 to bring a new recommendation to you. So that brings us to 2025, or our recommendation for 2025. So what, the net effect of that was, is that we stayed on the 2023 year impact fee schedule, ended up costing the city, or I shouldn't say cost, but we didn't receive $150,000 in transportation impact fees, and about $37,000 in parks fees, had we gone to the year two schedule. Here we are for 2024, we are recommending that we go to the full fee schedule of 2025, which would basically get us to the maximum that the, the study allowed us. We also were able to do 5% a year maximum increase based on inflation. So our recommendation is to implement the year three impact fees, which will get us to full implementation of the, of the study.
Okay, any questions for Sean? See any?
No.
Okay. Sean, I want to thank you, one of the, as you pointed out, one of the challenges the city had for this year was getting folks, the impact fee committee requires pretty good financial sense, and I know for me, I went around hat in hand from bank to bank in Hayden, asking for somebody to please volunteer time, so please to the entire committee, I want to express my appreciation, as I'm sure council does, for the work you guys do. We just can't throw any, anybody like me or somebody in there that doesn't know that stuff so well, so thank you very much.
Yeah, well, we appreciate that. The other, there's another thing I just want to point out really quickly, is that it also, it has to have two members that are developers, builders, those types of things, so, I know we like to demonize the developers a lot of times, but these guys voted also to increase their impact fees, so they're also working with the community to try and get more transportation fees out there, so we can improve the roads. Just think that's an important thing to point out, that they did, it was unanimous to adopt this year three fee schedule.
Thank you very much, Sean.
So does, does council want a motion to accept the recommendation by the committee and authorize
staff to notice for a public hearing to consider fee increases pursuant to Idaho code, or is there?
Before we get to that point, I just want to say, the reason I didn't ask any questions of Sean tonight, is because Donna was gracious enough to spend about a half an hour with me on Sunday, answering my questions.
So similar to what you guys had done at the workshop for the fee increases, you would be recommending that staff publish, again, another public hearing for consideration of these fees, I just want to make sure you understand that you're not making a decision tonight, you're recommending staff come forward with publishing that public hearing, which would happen sometime in January.
Is that the needed motion is?
I didn't get to finish it, so somebody else can make a motion.
Okay, so we basically need to, oh, read, where's it start, the bold. Okay, I move that staff.
Accept the recommendation.
Now, we accept the recommendation, oh, I get it from there, okay, by the impact fee committee and authorize staff to notice a public hearing and consider fee increases pursuant to Idaho Code 63-13118.
Excellent, we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, is there any discussion on the motion? Maybe get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember De Priest?
Yes.
Our last new item business is, council approve a contract amendment to address construction, engineering, and inspection costs related to the H6 force main. Council have any questions for staff, or are there any deliberations that need to occur?
Would you like me to summarize the proposal?
Please.
Okay, so, council recalls, we entered into a cooperative agreement with Harbs for the force main project that was going to be completed in conjunction with the city's H6 full buildout, that force main, that's going in the same ditch for, for our H6 agreement with our, with the developers. We, when we entered into that agreement, this, Harbs already had a contract with JUB to complete their required construction, engineering, and inspections, as it related to their component of, of the project. The, the fiscal year '25 budget did not include, for Harbs did not include any money towards completing any portion of the force main project, and therefore it left the contractual agreement with Harbs and JUB unfunded. Council recalls that you considered an amendment to the budget for Harbs to essentially provide funding for that to happen, and it was, to my recollection, passed by the council and the county as the other entity, but not by the district. So that left Harbs in a position of having a contractual agreement that they could not pay on, and they had liabilities essentially against that. We had entertained discussions with JUB about how we could collaborate towards a common solution, meaning if the city took over that portion, and we could reduce some costs, would they, would Harbs be willing to come back to the table and meet with us on that? And the answer was, let's see what it bids out as, and see if there's any cost savings. They gave us around $3.2 million for the project, and the project came in significantly under budget by, I think, $1.2 million-ish.
$1.27.
$1.27 million.
Village County.
Yeah, and some change. And, and as a result of that, the Harbs board last Friday met, and under a majority vote, agreed to this extension, or, excuse me, this new cooperative agreement, which allows for the city to retain costs associated with CE and I from the cost savings that we received through the bid, and then to remit back to Harbs the difference after we're completed with the project. So, it's very wise of us to enter into this agreement, so that we can retain those funds to pay JUB for those services. We are, we have asked JUB to look at this from a holistic cost perspective, and are trying to realize some cost savings with it, so it's actually a benefit for both. And again, Harbs has agreed to this, and I feel like, once we agree to it, then we'll take on those liabilities using the money that they, we've already received from them.
Any other questions? Anybody like to make a motion?
I would.
Okay.
Okay, I move that we accept this H6 first amendment of the cooperative agreement with Harbs, Hayden area regional sewer board.
Okay, any second?
One, two, three, second.
Any discussion on the motion being made? Maybe get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember De Priest?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Motion passes. We are moving on to reports, city administrator report, calendar.
Just really quickly, I talked to Captain Smart tonight over email, and he apologizes he couldn't be here tonight to give a report, he's looking forward to being back before council and providing a report over the December, November and December stats that they have. And I just had one quick update, I was expecting a longer meeting tonight, so I prepared a very short update, and as to let you know, the Ramsey Road project was awarded to Interstate Concrete and Asphalt, that award was a favorable bid, which we're very excited about, we did hear that they signed, so we will look to have construction occur next year now, and right now, knock on wood, we don't expect that the city will be asked to cover any additional funds outside of what we've already paid the state for that project. So that was a big concern, if you recall, when we talked about funding this project with the state back in June of last year, and, and essentially, if it bid higher than what we give them, the city was on the hook for that full amount of over, of the cost increases, and right now, the favorable bid looks like we won't have to pay any additional costs, so, thank you for your prayers on that one. With that, I would answer any questions. I, oh, I do want to say, and I think for the record, it's worth noting that, that the support really in making this project be achieved is KMPO's consistent and persistent support of regionalized transportation solutions, LTAC, ITD, and of course, the council for supporting this project as, as we have in the last year, so hats off to you all, thank you.
Okay.
Lisa, how far along from beginning to finally connecting with Lancaster is the Ramsey Road project, in terms of every hoop that?
It will be, it will go all the way to Lancaster, and it'll have a roundabout as part of this project.
I, I understand that, so.
Oh, good question, do we know, is it a two-year or one-year project?
It's a one-year project, it will take, it's slated to start this spring and be done by the end of paving season this coming summer.
It's usually when, when it freezes, so.
So.
Hopefully, we have a late winter.
Connected by next, mid, sometime second.
By the end of October. How's that?
That's cool.
Did we get any of the, for the sewer and what in, I know.
Sewer's in.
It's in, so it's really just matter of final grade and pave?
It's.
Basically?
Well, it's.
Little more.
Yes, that, it's not that simple, but yes.
Basically, yeah. It's basically prepped, so now.
Yeah, you'll have the road bases, the biggest part, and dealing with stormwater and all that, and that'll all go into that design and construction, though, excuse me, the design's done, but the actual construction, including the roundabout, correct?
The construction, including roundabouts, sidewalks, swales, intersection improvements, four-way stops.
But the underground stuff's done?
Yes.
The underground stuff is done, other than maybe some of the dry utilities like gas lines and communication lines and some of that stuff.
Good.
That will happen as part of this project.
So when you see Glenn out there, and you're.
I'll see him Thursday.
Make sure you say, thank you, this was his vision, albeit, it was a stressful moment when I came on with the city and realized what we had to do and the amount of time we had to do it with the amount of money we didn't have, that we were able to get where we're at, and he deserves your appreciation as well, so.
Okay, any other questions for Lisa? Does any council member have any board notes or reports they want to make? From outside the city, airport, KMPO, et cetera?
Uh, KMPO was quiet last month, Mr. Mayor, so I don't have anything to report. Okay, I will tell you that the, oh my gosh, now the name escapes me, the big planning document they have for all the regional transportation, that will be the main focus of next year.
Okay.
Yes, that one.
This one here?
Right.
My, are you done?
Yeah.
Might, might I suggest, if you can get your hands on this, this is what the ITD put out, they've had open houses, and I've attended almost all of them, and they had this last one, two weeks ago, I guess it is, and Hunter Bypass is the one that I think we are most concerned about, because it is on our border and it, and it has been tying things up, in my opinion, for a long time. It is one of 14 options, okay, and all I can give is my own opinion, which means nothing, but I sense that of these 13 other options, I don't think we're going to see the Hunter Bypass as, as a freeway running along our border. I could be absolutely wrong, okay, but if you can get your hands on this, it's very informative with the facts about where, where ITD really is with this, okay?
The official title of that?
Title of that, yes. Title, Level 2 Alternatives Development Description and Screening Criteria Summary of the Rathrum Prairie Planning and Environmental Linkage is PEL Study.
Is there a note on there as to where you can get that?
Idaho Transportation Department.
It's very hard to find at the KMPO website, I'm glad to share a copy electronically with.
Or does the Idaho Transportation Department have?
I, I don't know.
On the back, it says, if you have questions, please contact the study team, and then
it gives info@rathrumprairiepel.com, so I would probably start there.
Carrie Ann Hewitt has provided me the document, so I'd be happy to.
Do you think it'd be worthwhile to have somebody from KMPO come in and speak specifically to this?
Or maybe ITD?
Or ITD?
It's in their hands now, isn't it, really?
Yeah, but I mean, it does affect the region, and it affects Hayden, right?
Oh, yeah.
We could see if we could get someone from ITD up here, potentially.
Let's explore that.
Okay.
Can I make another comment to back up, to back up on this, since it was shorter than whatever meeting? And now that it's over with, I guess, I'm going to tie this to some social media stuff, because there's a lot of toxicity, okay, and.
cautious if you're going to discuss anything that happened.
Nope.
Because of the pill rights, okay?
Nope.
Okay.
Thank you.
Related to just, this is hard to say without people getting all upset, but the lack of education as to the realities and facts of not only this, but everything else, that there's some way that we could, we need to educate about not only this type of stuff, the Local Land Use Planning Act, okay, the Idaho statutes, okay, and codes, and the things that we have to abide by, okay? We might not agree, we might not like whatever it is, just as the people obviously don't like, but speaking personally, I've come to an understanding that otherwise, we're going to, we're going to be sued, and it's true, the taxpayers are going to pay for those lawsuits, we have to follow statutes and laws when it comes to land use. And a lot of the comments on social media and the like are totally uninformed, based on total lack of factual information, and things like this for IT, but again, and I know the average person and whatever, if you really want to understand what's going on, you need to really start looking at things like the Local Land Use Planning Act and the statutes that, that cover land use, so that you can speak from an educated point of view.
Thanks, Ed. Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to report on the airport board.
Airport board, all right, thank you.
So last month, in lieu of the airport board regular meeting, we had a town hall downtown, and it was very interesting talking about the history of the airport and the future of it, and I was really impressed with the airport control tower we have. It's very innovative, and they used containers, cargo containers to construct it, and at a great cost savings, and it might even become an example for other airports to use as well. So just that, meeting was very well done, and tomorrow is another airport board meeting.
Okay.
At 5:00.
Thank you. Does council have a request for any future agenda items in January?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just front-load council that it might be a very lengthy meeting, because it is a month, so your patience is greatly appreciated on that.
No, we'll do a good job getting through it in an efficient manner. Our next item up is for, is adjournment, but before I do, I want to recognize, we've been trying to work with council to get a nice balance with staff interactions and schedule, and I want to. and I want to feed back to council how much they so appreciate you calling and making appointments, as opposed to just showing up unexpected or calling them on the weekends. So I want to acknowledge that and thank you. Okay, go ahead, Ed.
Okay, last night, we had our Christmas party, whatever, and I just want to thank the staff, and, and whoever, those who planned and really were the, the, put it all together, because it really was an enjoyable time, and this will be our last meeting for the year, so everybody wish you a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and we'll see you next year.
I call for adjournment? Some moves. Thank you, everybody, drive safely.